Workshop, December 17th, it's 5:25 PM. I will take your roll call. Trustee Alonso.
Right.
Trustee Kasaius.
Here.
Trustee Crews is absent. Trustee Finery.
Here.
Trustee Wurlos is presently absent. Uh, trustee Ryan.
Here.
Trustee Valara.
Here.
Vice President Gilbeck.
Here.
President Broderick.
He's here but stepped out of the room.
Yeah, they're right. Actually, me and you. Um, let's be sure each other there. The superintendent gave you some additional commendations which we'll be doing tonight. Curriculum may have been met. There've been no additions or changes. Uh, so unless there's some questions, pretty much we're done with any of those resolutions. Uh, it was moved by trustee Kasaius, seconded by trustee Valara. Finance, building and grounds, resolutions B1 to B9, you've all received. And let the record show, trustees with us.
Hi.
Hey.
Before our meeting, I just need a move in a second by two of the members at Finance, since I missed the meeting. Next up is Personnel. Resolution C1 to C15. Uh, I think we should turn to C5. Assistant Superintendent Copas has his bullying report.
Thank you, Dr. May. In reported to the Bayonne Board of Education, policy 551. This reported period, seven incidents of harassment and intimidation of bullying have been reported and investigated at the following schools. One incident at Horace Mann and one incident at Mary J. Dunne have been investigated and confirmed. Strategies and resources have been provided to the victims to assist in the recovery process. Consequences and remedial measures were given to the offenders. All documentation is being retained by the Anti-Bullying Coordinator. We have one incident at Mary J. Dunne, two incidents at Horace Mann, one incident at William Shemman Midtown Community, and one incident at Woodrow Wilson. In these five cases, there was no confirmed evidence of the investigated acts of HIV. Strategies, resources, and remedial measures were implemented. All documentation is being retained by the school anti-bullying.
I just want to point out, there's a mistake, typo in the agenda on C5. It should be bullying for November, December 2019 and not September. I'm sorry about that. Um, I believe that's it. Mr. Copas, we're outside. I don't know, uh, okay. Any of the assistant superintendents have anything? No trustees, do we have anything?
Something. Come on, guys, it's nothing. Something good.
I was like, here we go.
Something good. I had an idea and I figured I'd just bring it up at the workshop. If you like it, we think about it and talk about it, and if you don't, then we don't.
I just would like to try, point out to trustee Alonso before you start, it is the holiday season.
Yes.
And, uh, I want to, I-
Holiday season.
It's the holiday season and I want to appeal to the better angels of our nature?
Yes.
Okay.
So, this is my idea, to have a student representative on the board here with us. And I just kinda, you know, this could change, just kind of a quick little outline of what some other schools kinda do. And I just wanted to bring it up to you guys at the workshop and, you know, if you like it, you like it, if you don't, you don't, but it's, um, okay.
I think you should ask the president, not ask the secretary.
Okay.
Certainly ask your question.
Mr. President?
Sure.
Um, trustee Alonso, I definitely, I have to read through this. I do, I do commend, you know, your enthusiasm and you bringing ideas to the board, but if I'm not mistaken, don't we have a student representative to the board from the student council?
Student council.
But here, with us, they would be like, here at the workshop, participating in the discussions, except for those items like labor and HIBs.
So essentially, a non-voting member.
Right, but really part of collective, like, part of the body. I mean, they're, they walk the halls every day, they probably know more about the buildings than anyone else.
Well, that's where I was gonna ask you, trustee Alonso, what's the rationale for it? Other than other school districts do it, what's the rationale?
Well, I think some of our students come up with the best ideas for our district and, you know, we should really give them that spot to voice their opinions.
I thought we provided that at a public meeting.
Yes, but this would be like more inclusive. They would be here at the workshop, at the regular meeting, if we have any special meetings.
Nothing's prohibiting a student from sitting in this bench behind us right now.
I know, I want to bring them out of the bench and to the table.
Oh, so they can contribute to the meeting?
Yes, yeah, at the table.
Well, I mean, the super, that we do.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Secretary May said we need a bigger table and smaller chairs, because we can't say this. We're bumping into each other as is.
You get your wish, don't you?
We're gonna get the smaller chairs.
Mr. Superintendent, was this brought to you?
It literally was just brought to me.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
What's your feeling on it? What's your, like your jumpstart?
No, 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 I-
You need your product.
I believe in being open to the, to the students, right? I think that's an important process. In fact, about 20 minutes ago, I just emailed a student that I'm meeting with for another organization. I have numerous meetings with students. I, we, Karen will tell you, we order a lot of pizza and food because I meet with the kids. I think that's an important process. Um, it's a nice idea, I like it. It has its limitations and I don't know how complicit we are when we open up the meeting to a, to a student. You know what I mean? Like, I don't know, and when I'm, when I mention complicity, I mean, you know, like, if I'm a student, am I gonna come in and say, like, the toilets are dirty, I don't like my teacher? Which are, it could be valid complaints, it's just, you know-
There's a chain of command for that, right?
Right, for the board to determine that. And if we do, I'm just saying, if we do a student, why don't we have a teacher? Why don't we have another administrator?
Karen.
Why don't we have a parent? And our-
The more the merrier, why not?
Yeah, it's, I, I get it though, I get it. Um, but I do, you know, since I've, since I've been here, I, I think it is important to involve the students, and that's what I'm doing as a superintendent. That's where our model came from, our vision and mission statement, we're gonna start on that in January, to frame, to frame out where we're going as a district. So, there are many avenues to communicate, and i-if we do that, then perhaps the PTO, have someone from the PTO to come, come on board. I, I think for the future of our board is that we actually go to the entire community and we have our meetings at the schools. And we see firsthand, hey, the roof's leaking, when are we gonna fix that? Um, these are concerns that Dan and I have, when you walk into a school.
Like every month, a different school.
Yeah, we have 12 months, 12 different schools, why not have a meeting at every school? And go to the people of Bayonne from, um, now, I said north the last time, right? Uptown, downtown. But it, I, I think that's important. I think that's important for a board of education, you know, for us to do that, to go around the town, to be accessible. And Arsh, right, our student president, he's been very vocal, and there's another group that, that I'm meeting with from the high school. So, yeah, it's, it's important to connect, and I think that's what I'm, I'm all about, is connecting with the kids. And even more so, I think all of us are gonna be connecting with the kids on Friday when we dress up as-
Santa Mouse.
Well, I just want to make an occasional glance to Skippy the Elf.
You should explain to them what you're talking about, I don't know if people-
Oh, yeah, why don't I, why don't I let you know?
Yeah.
So, uh, one of the things we did in my former district is, and the former district before that, is we go to the students and we dress up as just characters. Um, it could be the Grinch. It could be Skippy the Elf. It could be Santa Claus. It could be the bee from the high school. It could be a tree.
Witch, witch of the West.
Yes, we could do, oh, we could do all that. Um, but we do, we go around the schools, we go to, we're gonna, so our goal here is to go to all 12 schools, walk around, and spread some Christmas cheer, and to see us in a, in a different light, to, to, to get the kids excited. If we're not having fun, I don't want to be here. And I hope all of us here wanna have fun.
I agree.
So, we're doing that, that's, that's, that's a first, and-
Now, is the BA the Grinch, 'cause he controls the money?
Um, he's a Christmas tree and his shoes, I think, are rotten.
The mean ones, Mr. Grinch.
I'll be whatever he tells you.
I'm coming with video camera.
Oh, Dan's wearing tights.
Yes, yes, oh, I know Skippy the Elf is.
I'll be dressed at work.
But yeah, it's important, and as trustee Alonso and all of us have thought, it's important to connect with the, with the children. Without them, we have-
I like it.
Now, as far as getting back to-
Trustee, yeah, I mean, I like the idea, I mean, I think it would have to be crafted, and I do think that the superintendent brings up a very good point, like, where do you, you know, stop? Do you have a, a teacher? I mean, listen, I'd love to have a teacher representative on the board, I'd love to have a student and a parent, I mean, I think, but then it becomes, let's get a member of the clergy, let's get a member of this.
It's different, though, they're the ones you guys deliver the product to.
I agree, I, but I do, well, I just wasn't, but I do know the superintendent has regular meetings with members of the student body to bring these things. And, um, and trustee Finery's right, they're, they're, you know, we've never, ever turned away anyone from coming to speak at this dais to say-
What if you did something like you said and have, like, you know, like, every month or something, somebody else, like a representative from the PTO's come and speak?
How about if we sent a representative-
Because I figured that the superintendent would pick the student-
If we sent a representative to the student council meeting?
Well, the student-
That's fine.
And, and instead of them coming to us, we go to them, just like kinda like the superintendent said.
I mean, as long as the superintendent-
Yeah.
Well, I'd be with them. As long as the superintendent thinks it's, you know, says okay, a board member goes into the-
I'll be honest with you, occasionally I get to go to the CPAC meetings and I learn a lot there.
Yeah.
You know, you really do. And occasion, you know, and I think that's probably something we should reach out to do, even if, as, as board members try to get to more PTO meetings, you know, 'cause-
Absolutely.
And student council meetings. But as opposed to trying to bring everybody to this table, you know, we should take the people from this table and go to those people.
I know several of us have received invitations to PTO meetings over the years, I mean, I know I've attended Henry Harris and, uh, who else, where do we go? Lincoln, I mean, you know, so, I mean, yeah, I would love to.
And, and, and in their home setting, they know, they'll tell you exactly what you need to know.
They do, they do.
With this, the one thing that I really have a hesitation about is that the student, and by definition, almost every other non-elected member would be precluded from negotiations, evaluations, litigation, and other matters. Essentially, we're running the, the risk of creating basically a figurehead position. You can't really know much more than anybody out there. I don't, I don't know where this is going. You're, you're, you're precluded from all the meat and potatoes. Um, I, I, I find it problematic to that extent, that the person's gonna come in here, especially a student, they're gonna be really, really motivated to participate, and then they'll be told, well, you can't, and you can't, and well, that's nice, but you don't know about this, and you're not allowed to know, by law, and so it would have to be very carefully done. Whereas, like, um, maybe the student council can change their position, their person, okay, not only do you tell them what's going on, but you take notes of what's going on here, and there can be more of a back and forth, because then they're not bound by those rules. I mean, not only that, but they have a student newspaper, the Beacon, that could be the function of the Beacon, can you please send a member to take notes and put it in the Beacon? And then they can go through their student council and their student council, well, we noticed this the last time and we did that, because they don't have a three-minute, we don't give that student council representative a three-minute limit. So, if the, you know, I think it would be who was to try to craft something along that way, as opposed to artificially creating a board member who's not really a board member, who's a board member only in name, that, that, I don't want to crush the kids.
No, but basically, those things listed are like the things that we would have to talk about, like an executive session that we can't do out here.
And right, so they can't be part of-
The student would just sit here at the table with us for this.
For all the stuff that we do out here.
That's what I'm, that's-
For the stuff that we do, do in public.
Excuse me, that's what I just said before.
Right.
A student sit here, right now- I know, but if he sat here at the table with us- There's only one person here. If he sat here at the table with us, he can participate in the conversation. Absolutely. But if you sit out there-
You can.
You can participate in the conversation. Yeah, but I'm just saying, he could come here, or she, come here and add, but, when do they get the, uh, the agenda? When do they get the discussion? When can they really intelligently think about what we're going to discuss here? We on, on committee have already been briefed on a number of things, and then we, on committee, as well as trustees, receive, so we can, we can make informed decisions and have an intelligent discussion. So, we're going to also then include the person, the student, on that email beforehand. We, we don't come here and sit here blindly, we all know we don't sit here blindly, because we need to make informed decisions. So, now we're going to put it out there to a student representative. I get that students should be totally involved in our discussion, because what we decide 97% of the time impacts the students. I understand trustee Alonso's suggestion, 100%, but I don't, I don't know how we're going to institute it, I really don't. And I would be interested to find out, you said you know of other school districts that have done it?
Yeah.
Okay, just give us-
Grant.
Can we, can we get like a copy of their meetings?
What do they do with the student? Does, does the student get a copy of the, of the, of the agenda ahead of time? Does, like, that's, we just need to know their procedure, like, understand their procedure a little more, it's a good idea, just need to- I'm sure you would see that whenever it's made public, I mean, it is, so, we do post it. If there's other districts that do it the way you're saying, then we just need a little more on the procedure, and then bring it back and we'll talk about it.
So, trustee, yeah, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Can we, can we, and mind you, when I say table it, not in a negative way, but can we-
Well, no, it's the workshop, this is what they're gonna do.
Yeah, yeah, can we, can we table it to after the New Year and think about it as far as how we could craft it?
Right, exactly.
Maybe, maybe have the secretary or, you know, or the superintendent, you know, contact all the districts, see how they do it, you know, if, if, if Mr. Nice is okay with it, and then we'll play from there, I mean, make it on-
If something feasible that can be done here, then it's, it's worth, it's worth investigating? That's all?
I mean, yeah, and committee.
Just to find out.
Right, so whatever.
Absolutely.
Excuse me, trustee?
Yes.
What committee?
Oh, I mean, I, I, well, I'm sorry.
Policy, procedures?
Yes, it would go to, it would go to curriculum.
It would go to curriculum.
Curriculum, policy, procedure.
I don't know, but bring another person here, it's personnel, I think, I don't know, I'm joking.
A little bit of everything.
No, it is, though.
I mean, I think every committee can bring it up on the agenda, I don't see why everyone can't talk about it, I mean, you know, it's up to you.
It's not something that's specific just to one.
No, it's not specific to one, you're right.
No, we'd have to, right.
It's about curriculum, it's about personnel, and it's about policy.
So, you decide, yeah, I mean, so, well, gonna table this in-
Can I have those, so I could start signing?
Beginning of the year, we'll take a better look at it, we'll get more information. Maybe Mr. Nice can find out some other districts that do something like this, and what privileges do they give that student, and, you know, where do the regulations begin and stop? All right, thank you.
Nice, quick, finally, something that's-
I did something else I wanted to propose, but I don't know, I'm just taking it on a high note, I don't know, I'm-
All right, we're in a good note here.
Okay, I think it's a good note.
But this one's not bad either.
Okay, let's do it.
Go ahead.
It depends. It was just, um, I didn't want a copy, and they like 12 copies, 'cause there's like three different versions, and it was just, um, proposing a change to our bylaws, um, just a 0152, the board officers, so, it was like two ideas I had, just whatever you guys think, and the only two changes was that, you know, um, only board members who have at least had a year experience could be nominated for board president, that would be one change. And the other change would be that you can't serve as president for more than two consecutive years. Of course, the sitting one would be grandfathered in. But I don't know what you guys thought about new board members and having experience being mandatory before they take a leadership role, or what everybody thought about term limits.
I actually agree with that, because my view personally is that, I agree with the new members not being in leadership position, because they haven't done the course yet, which comes after your, after all that is done, and it should be a year experience with the course, take, with the New Jersey course courses, I agree with that, I like that.
As far as term limits, I guess, is that what the, would be?
Yeah, well, you know-
Yeah, I mean, you know, I like the idea in principle, but maybe not in practice only, because if a majority of the board feels that a certain person deserves to be in that leadership position, and they trust their leadership and judgment, I can't see limiting them to just two years, because, you know, like, look at our current president now, he's been here one, two, that's a lot of years, right, four, four years?
Four years.
Four years, I mean, I, I'm just saying, I mean, if a majority of the board feels that a person should be re, you know, reappointed, I guess, is that the right word, a majority of the board? Um, I don't see why we should put-
Re-elected, I like the word elected better.
Or, or, yeah, if we elect, a majority of us elect a, a president, and we want that president to continue, I don't see why we should limit that. Um, I do understand why, and to give everyone an opportunity for leadership, I, I do get that, but I don't know.
It wouldn't exclude you for your lifetime, for example, you could do two years and then-
A year off and then come back strong.
Yeah, sure, you know, whatever, but, um, that's why I didn't want to print out, you know, 3700 pages here. I figured those are the two ideas, see what you guys thought?
Anybody have any, uh?
The only downside I see, not the second one, but the first one about a new person coming on and being an officer, I happen to be in both situations, believe me, right? But if there is a, there could be an extenuating circumstance where somebody might come on with just, for whatever the reasons, and don't forget, if people go, like, for instance, when we came on, there happened to be five board members elected that year. So, is it, and, and we went from a transition of being appointed to being elected, so it was a whole different ballgame than we have right now. Uh, what I would say with the rules the way it is right now is, there's still all these members, and they're gonna vote for who they'd like to see as president or vice president anyway, uh, so I don't know why the need to, just, the need for having a rule, why we need that rule, just in case there would be a, you know, we could say, no, you never can, but there might be a situation where somebody might come in.
How about if we put an exclusion, we put a, and-
You have to speak into the microphone.
How about if we put, if we put something, when you write the policy, that if the board transitions from an elected to an appointed, then you can have a first year, if it transitions from an appointed to an elected, then you can have a first year, person, you can add that clause to it as well, that that would fit your situation.
I think, um, and I just want to point something out, so, when we sit at the table and, and draft a, perhaps a new policy or a new regulation for the district, I, I do so with great trepidation, and I say that because we subscribe to Strauss Esme, to do our policies and procedures, they're attorneys. So, I, my olive branch to the board is, is quite simply, if during the core normal course of our business, we find a policy, such as trustee Alonso, he recommends a policy, or any trustee recommends a policy, that we put a caveat to that, pending attorney review, because we could approve something here, and it could be moved by a trustee, second, a vote, it could be a unanimous vote, because it just makes sense, and then we find that it does, it's not congruent with law, or there could be some, some, something we bound ourselves by. So, in the future, if we, if, if you could, Mr. President, just make note that if we do approve a policy, it's just pending attorney review, because as we know, this, if we were to adopt this, any policy, we'd have to bring it back to the board for a second reading, and in that time, I would prefer to have an attorney review, just to make sure that we don't hamstring ourselves or handcuff ourselves to, to a policy that could be a problem.
To present, that's like with all policy and procedure, would just be this one, everything?
Everything, everything, yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's an understated way to go.
I don't think anyone was prepared for a phone.
No one was prepared for a discussion, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just, yeah.
Workshop, that's what it's for.
You know, why not an NBA lottery system, where everyone has bowls in there, most bowls, you get like, you know, the lower your term, you could just put it in and everyone just keeps on going, that's how you pick your president, like a lottery, NBA style.
You're losing your phone from that one.
I can't, I can't relate.
I mean, it's just an arbitrary, you know.
I have no idea what you're gonna say.
Trustee Munoz.
Like bingo.
Trustee Munoz, I gotta put that to pending attorney review.
I like that, you know what, we, you know what, might as well have fun with it while we're doing it, right?
No, what I, what I do remember, when I went to my Governance 1 training, what, almost five years ago, and it was, it was, it was excellent, it was an excellent experience for me, as well as many other people in the room, and the one piece of advice that I left that room with was, always, always run it by your attorney. That's what one needs to do, you always run it by your attorney, and I think that's what Mr. Nice is saying. We can say anything we want here, we can, we can make up any rule we want, however, in the end, it's our attorneys. Hey, how you doing, Mr. Bestfoul? Hey, how you doing? Where are you, Mr. Clark? Oh, I see where you are, you're not here, okay. But no.
I mean, I can tell you, like, when I ask school boards, I can tell you what the attorney at the dais said, um, the only time it would be an issue-
The attorney of the day.
Was if you were going to make a rule that would then maybe recruit, preclude somebody from a protected class. So, for example, if all the incoming trustees were women, and we're making this rule that says you have to have a year experience, we're boxing out all women and they would be a protected class, so we couldn't do it, you know, but-
You know what, I think, we need to have attorney review. Perhaps Maria doesn't remember, because she were not here, and Jody wasn't here, but I do remember, there is a reason in the business world, your salary, uh, we can, we can translate salary into position, responsibility, is commensurate with your experience. Sit in this room, sit in that conference room for two to three years, and trust me, I know a lot more now than I did five years ago, and I thought I went into that room knowing everything five years ago, and I realized within four months I knew nothing. With experience comes knowledge, so, I do believe that the suggestion that a new trustee should unassume a position of, well, you know what, quite frankly, you always think about this, and I'll, I'll share it with public, seriously, being president of the board, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, does not give you any more authority than anybody sitting at this table. If anything, it gives you a lot more responsibility, but each one of us have the same weight in that room, it's called one ninth of the vote. It's, it doesn't give you any more authority, it makes you have to show up if there's an emergency, if there's a situation that perhaps Mr. Nice need you, and I do know for a fact that you have spent, this current president has spent many hours in that conference room discussing, and it has nothing to do with the fact that you have any more authority than any of the eight of us sitting right here, am I right about that, or am I wrong, Mitch?
Uh, well, the, the president does have certain-
I'm sorry?
The president does have certain responsibilities that the other-
He has responsibility, but he doesn't have any more authority.
Well, the appointment, you know, right off the top of my head, the appointment of chair of persons to each committee, you know, like, those types of things, but, um, you know.
Can he override the vote of a board?
No, no.
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 It's all about accepting your responsibility and having the, I don't know, the time to put in and being there. It's, it's more responsibility attached than any kind of more authority. That's the way I view it, I've only been on the board, but for five years, I know I've only been on the board, but for five years, I know board members who've been sitting in a seat for twelve years. But I do know with being president, he's a phone call away at eleven o'clock in the morning. And I know you've been there, right, Joe?
Yeah, I've been there.
Yeah, so...
I have a question.
I tell you what I, what I found out was pretty much that, uh, when you get on the board, you don't find out what you can do, you find out more what you can't do.
What you can do, but...
Right, you come on with all these grand juror, you know, "We're gonna do this, gonna do that," and you go, "No, you can't do that. No, you can't do that."
What if, what if the president had a job? Are you gonna tell me every president, like, the school board, eh, all over the world? Like...
Oh, no. I'm sure it's...
Nobody works?
Probably the majority have a job.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So like, how does it function? You'd have to work hand in hand with your superintendent.
That's why we're so much better than those other districts.
Conference...
Right, all right, I'm, I'm good, I'm just, I'm just questioning, I just think it's...
You know, trustee, because I say, I agree with you, and I, and I've said this time and time again, this is the twenty-first century, technology's a wonderful thing, you know what?
Conference calls are wonderful.
Yeah, you know what, you have, you have smartphones, you can do a lot with your smartphone. I know, myself and superintendent Nice, we do a lot with phone calls, you know? So, I mean, I, I, I think it, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be someone who is...
No.
No, and they don't have, the president doesn't have more, like you said, you know, you're one ninth of a vote than...
One ninth of a vote.
That's it. Sorry, Joe.
You're one ninth of me, Joe.
That's it.
No, I'm, no. I'm one ninth of this group.
It's a lot of responsibility to give somebody who didn't have any training at the age of two hours.
I agree with you, I agree. I agree with that, though.
I agree with that.
Thank you, everybody, I do appreciate everybody talking about it.
And just one more thing before, because I have a feeling that we're gonna end this merry little, uh, meeting in a minute.
It's Christmas.
But I just wanted to say, and I know it's probably kind of mixing, but, um, you know, as, as we all know, our assistant superintendent, uh, Mr. Copaz, is also a Hudson County freeholder, and I want to kind of publicly thank him, um, for the gazebo at Hudson County Park.
Oh, that's beautiful.
I drove by it the other day.
Oh, that's a really great ending.
And, uh, it is, it is absolutely amazing, and, um, I just want to say what a great job he's doing, and it's a privilege to have him as the assistant superintendent here, and, and as our freeholder. I mean, I voted for him twice.
I did it.
Thank you, yeah? But I, I just want to say, uh, no, but I, what a great job, and I want to publicly say it, and I didn't know where else to say it, because, I mean, I'm not going to the freeholder meeting. But, um, I will write a letter to the editor, and, uh, thank you publicly. Thank you for bringing back some holiday spirit to Bowne.
That's, that's all I hear. Of course, I, you know, I, I talk too much, I know that, but I have to tell you... I, I was totally, totally, and I don't know who was responsible for this, but the blew-out day, and what happened in the entrance of the main building of Bowne High School...
Yeah, that was beautiful.
For Joe Seals. I mean, I, I was just blown away, and it just showed the class that Bowne, the Bowne School District has, and the sensitivity, and the intelligence to do something quietly, yet very, very classy. And I, I don't know, I really, whose idea was that?
It was the students.
I had no idea. It was, it was fabulous.
But I see, but the student got the, the thing to us without you.
Wonderful. And whoever's responsible for that, I, I think they also need to be commended for that. That was, that was just, it blew me away when I saw it.
Yeah.
So thank you to anyone who was involved with that. The gazebo is nice, too, Mr. President. We love your gazebo.
I, I would just like to add that, Michael, you had some good ideas tonight, and, uh, they also need some more discussion. But as Marie said, the fact of the matter is that incoming trustees definitely need to go through governance, and as well as the fact that time on the job would make for the difference between trustee becoming an officer and just occupying a seat. So good ideas.
Thank you.
All right.
A point of reference to the people out in TV land, I'm sure trustee Munoz, that he voted twice in separate elections, and he didn't vote twice in the same...
Hudson County.
But we just want... I'm sure it's already out on the internet, I think he voted twice.
Superintendent Hudson County is early and often.
Trustee Munoz, his motto is vote and vote often.
That's our motto.
Executive session for legal personnel items in five fifty-eight.
Thank you.